Well, Clark, if you would, please call the roll.
Mayor.
Here.
Mr. Philip Powell.
Here.
Ms. Ibbotson?
Here.
Sorry. Uh, Ms. Stewart?
Here.
Mr. Cordell?
Here.
Ms. Bridges? Uh, Ms. Selmore?
Here.
Mr. Bowles?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Hutton?
Here.
Mr. Florence?
Here.
Mr. Butler?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. All right, packets were made available Thursday, pick up on Fridays. Everybody had an opportunity to review all the many, the meeting minutes. So I'll take a motion to approve January thirteenth's regular meeting minutes.
Mr. Mooney, Mr. Mooney, I'll make a motion to, to approve the January thirteenth minutes.
Seconded. Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'll take a motion to approve January sixteenth condemnation information session minutes.
Motion's on move.
Thank you. Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion?
Just to request that in the future con- condemnation meetings, we could list the subject properties in the minutes for sake of record.
Thank you. Anything else? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And lastly, I'll take a motion to accept the January twenty-seventh special meeting minutes. Motion's made?
Seconded.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion on those? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. We've got a, first on the agenda is our public comment. That's gonna be Ms. Elizabeth Anderson to give us a description, presentation on the Carver Business Career Center. So welcome, thank you.
Oh, thanks. I'm honored to be here. Uh, I'm gonna pass some of these out to the people in their room, and I have more, uh, if needed. I've done this speech enough, so I'm hoping I can wing it, 'cause I lost my notes at one of the meetings on Wednesday, so. Anyway, I'm Elizabeth Anderson, and Dr. Tackett, um, asked myself and my husband at the time to lead the initiative to, um, run a millage campaign. Um, at the time of the meeting, my husband was hunting, and I think he's still hunting, so. Um, anyway, I wanna tell you a little bit about, um, college graduation rates. Um, Arkansas Democrat Gazette ran an article that talked about college graduation, high school graduation rates, and those kids that actually attend college. And in the state of Arkansas, only forty-eight percent of kids that graduate Arkansas high schools attend college. That just means they started. That doesn't mean they finish it. And so you take those numbers and you wonder how that compares to the town of Lone Oak. Well, in Lone Oak last year, there were a hundred and thirty-two graduating members of the twenty-nineteen class, and only forty-four of those students went to college. That's thirty-three percent. That's a huge difference than the statewide, um, the statewide percentage of forty-eight percent. College to, college enrollment is decreasing. There's more kids that are getting out of college, getting out of high school, and they can't afford college. Their parents can't afford college, so they have, they take a year to get a job, and next thing you know, it's been two years, three years. Or they attend college on a scholarship, lose the scholarship. Or they attend college and they can't raise enough money, so they borrow mon- they have to borrow money, and they can't pay for college, so they end up dropping out with debt. So only forty-five percent of kids who actually start college finish it within six years. So that just tells you that there's just a need in our community for something more than a college education. And I think, um, right now, our country is in a desperate need for tradesmen. Our town is in a desperate need for kids who are educated to run a job force here in Lone Oak, that'll stay here in Lone Oak, that'll work for the, for the companies that are here in Lone Oak. If it may be, um, um, M K T, or Benny Keith, or Caterpillar. And the school district has partnerships with all these businesses to develop this business academy and to have internship programs. Uh, we're gonna ha- offer diesel mechanic classes, and we're gonna offer, um, industrial, industrial technology classes. Um, all these classes are, and also agriculture and aquaculture classes. These classes are gonna be geared toward training chil- our children on jobs that they can use here and stay in Lone Oak. And that's the initiative of the Business Academy. We also have, attached to the Carver Business Academy will be a health clinic, which right now, there's a health clinic at the primary school that houses a doctor and two residents, and that's a partnership with Baptist Health, and we're hoping to grow that partnership and have more doctors here, more residents rotating through, through a partnership with Baptist and U A M S. They're gonna provide two doctors along with up to five residents. And how great will that be for our students? We have almost seventy percent free and reduced students that are on free and reduced lunch plans at our school district. If they can't afford to pay for lunch, do you think they afford to go to the doctor? But this is a, a service that's gonna be provided to our students for free. They're gonna be able to see doctors, nurses, um, and we're in hopes to even provide dental services for these kids. And this'll all be part of that health clinic that'll be part of the Business Academy. And this health clinic will also be open to the community. And we all know what, how scary it can be to not have a doctor in town, and how economic development will be based off of not having, um, a doctor in town. So I think it's gonna be a great opportunity for our town to have more doctors, more nurses, more chances for our kids to, um, have economic development. It'll, sorry, sorry. Um, it'll be a great opportunity for our kids to take, there's, um, the courses will be offered, will be offered by ASU B B, a partnership with them. And ASU will offer, like, out, college algebra courses for kids who do wanna go to college, but maybe just need to test the waters and see if they can. So there's gonna be a lecture hall that will offer some beginning college courses, and then there'll be all these hands-on, um, courses. I passed out, um, a little trifle that, um, that gives them information about our millage. There's also on the back, it talks about how much it's gonna cost. And the average tax person will not even, it won't, for a cup of coffee a week, it won't cost you to, to help us build this Business Academy, and I just think it's gonna provide so much economi- economic development and growth for the future of Lone Oak, and provide a workforce that'll stay here and, and raise our families here. So, um, we have several slides. Okay. So these are just some quotes on, um, on how college is becoming, um, less of an option in trade schools. And if you, if you listen to the news, it's all about trade school and sending kids to trade school. I mean, last time you called for a plumber, how much did it cost you? Well, mine rang the doorbell, and it was a hundred dollars just to show up. It didn't, it didn't, and he came from North Little Rock. So, you know, we, our town is desperate for some hands-on help around here, um, let's see. Anyway, so here's, um, talk about, um, the college versus the enrollment. Um, the tuition that ASU B B is gonna offer our students is fifty dollars an hour. Where if you go to Fayetteville, it's almost two-hundred-and-fifty an hour. And those are for the college courses that are gonna be offered. It's just a great opportunity for kids in our school district to be able to get their feet wet and, and, and realize if college is truly them, for them, versus, um, actually going to college and getting in a whole bunch of debt. So, um, skip ahead to the, um, this is the one that's being built in Saline County right now. They're ha- building a, um, what is it called, Dr. Tackett? It's a, it's not-
Career, Career Technical Center.
Career Technical Center, and both Benton and Bryant School Districts will filter into this. And it'll be right on Interstate thirty, so, um, it's something that we're gonna need to, to be able to compete with other school districts. Uh, school choice becomes a real thing in May, so come May, anybody that goes to Lone Oak Schools can apply to go to another school, or other schools can apply to come to Lone Oak Schools. And without even moving, you can go to any school district of your choice. So I think with, by making our school district more, um, marketable and offering more courses, um, trying to get to the, oh, here's the picture. Um, trying to offer more courses will, will make us more valuable. So this is what the Business Academy will look like. Um, if you know where the post office is in Lone Oak, it will be built on nine acres that was donated by the Wardalack family, um, on, on Highway seventy, right there next to the post office, so it'll have great frontage. And I tease that every time the interstate has a wreck, everybody's gonna drive past the Business Academy, and they're gonna Google it, because that's what I do when I'm a passenger in my husband's car, and we're off on a random road, I start Googling, well, what does this town offer? And, um, and so this Business Acad- it's gonna be a beautiful building, it's gonna, um, here's the, um, I guess the layout of the building. You can see the lecture hall. Um, and this over here is the big medical clinic. On one side will house the students and staff of the school, and the other side will be open to the public, and the kids will be able to shadow nurses and doctors. So if they're interested in going to nursing school before they even graduate high school, they can shadow a nurse and see what that's about, and learn about it, and have that hands-on training. So, um, and here's the, um, oversight, as you can see, that on the left side is the post office. So that's where, um, the proposed building will be built, and, um, I really appreciate everybody's support and, um, to get this millage passed. Do you wanna add anything?
I'll just say, I think you did a great job. I'll just say that, um, yeah, she did. I'm a school official, but more importantly, I'm a community member here. And this really gives us in this town an unprecedented opportunity to grow our economy by building a workforce. And that's what it's all about. More businesses and residents will come here when we have more, um, uh, more, uh, workers, skilled workers, which is what we need here. Uh, there's a lot of jobs to be had in this area. And, um, kids may wanna go to college, and we want them to, but why not have some skills as well? And, um, uh, we have probably thirty different businesses with whom we have partnerships, and they're all saying the same thing. We need skilled workers, and we pay a lot of money. And so why don't our kids get the opportunity? We have a captive audience at the school over there. This is a great opportunity for us to build Lone Oak, really appreciate the opportunity to speak to the council, appreciate the mayor. Elizabeth's done a great job. We probably have twenty-plus people involved in this campaign, so we just appreciate your support. It's a real opportunity for us.
And I do wanna say one more thing, that, you know, I have two boys that are in the school district, and they're nine and eleven, and I have every hope that they go to college, but my hope is, too, they go to college knowing how to fi- fix a diesel engine. So that if they come back to our community one day, college-educated, they know how to work on a tractor, and they know how to work on diesel, uh, machine or eighteen-wheeler, so that it can enrich their business, and, um, they can grow that too. So I think it's just as important for kids who wanna go to college versus kids who don't. So, anyway, thank you so much for giving us the time. I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Are there any, are there any questions from the council while we have Dr. Tackett and Ms. Elizabeth?
You know, I would like to say that we have had several doctors graduate from Lone Oak High School, and all of them have moved off. Had they been a part of a program like this, they may have stayed in Lone Oak and made Lone Oak their home. But, um, with my age children, we have a lot of doctors. I know Dr. Tackett has a doctor, has a son, and I just think, had they been a part of this and exposed to it in high school, we may not have the problem of looking for a doctor in town. But I think our hopes are to keep them here and interested, and maybe give back to the school and be a part of this program. So I think it's so very important that we all talk to our friends and our neighbors, uh, to get out and vote, because early voting starts February seventeenth. Okay, so, you know, if they can't come on the election day, please tell them to come early and vote. Avoid the crowd, remind them, keep plugging it in on Facebook, talk to your church members, your neighbors, your friends, and share this, because they have plenty of opportunities to go and vote. And, you know, like Dr. Tackett said, if we don't do this, if we don't do this and vote for it, someone else will. So please encourage everyone you know to get out and vote. It is so important for the life of our school.
Thank you, Suzette. Early voting is February the eighteenth.
Do we know where that is?
Community Center.
Community?
Lone Oak Community Center. February the eighteenth, March the second, and official votes March the third. So, if it's, uh, okay with the council, there's no objection. We actually have a resolution. That's why I asked these guys to, uh, present tonight, because I was gonna ask the city council to pass a resolution in support of the millage. Unless there's any objection, I'll go ahead and take a motion to entertain resolution two dash one dash twenty-two. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Thank you guys so much.
Uh, resolution two dash one dash twenty-two. A resolution of support endorsing the proposed one-point-nine-mill increase necessary for the funding of the Lone Oak Public School District's Carver Business Academy, whereas officials of the Lone Oaks, of the city of Lone Oak consider access to higher education to be of utmost importance to the city's future economic and community development. And whereas the Lone Oak School District has proposed a one-point-nine-mill increase to be voted on by the people of Lone Oak, supporting the construction of the Carver Business Academy. And whereas the Carver Business, Business Academy will offer certifications in diesel mechanics, aquaculture, agriculture, industrial technology, and healthcare services. And whereas these courses will either be offered through a partnership with and through support from ASU B B and the Arkansas Department of Education, and whereas officials from the city of Lone Oak feel that it is in the best interest of the city's citizens of Lone Oak to endorse said project. Now therefore be it resolved that the Lone Oak City Council hereby endorses the proposed one-point-nine-mill increase necessary for the funding of the Carver Business Academy.
Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion? All right, we'll take it to a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Resolution carries. Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Tackett. All right, next on the agenda, uh, we have Ms. Anna McClung with our Lone Oak twenty-twenty-two update. Good evening.
Uh, first of all, just, uh, point out, I dropped off to, um, a personalized card. It's not a valentine from us, but, so. It's an invitation to attend the March fifteenth closing, um, uh, ceremony for the Presbyterian Church here in town, which is a historical landmark, of course, in our city, and that will be their last service, and so you each are invited to, to attend that. So to finish the Lone Oak twenty-twenty-two report, um, we had this same lovely group of people here, um, with us on January twenty-third, where they gave us an update about the, uh, Carver Center Business Academy. And we had about thirty people in attendance to that, and so we had some, um, good discussion, and Dr. Tackett and Ms. Anderson were there to answer the questions that we had. We also had a, a short update from Ms. Valerie Turner, uh, who presented a video about the importance of our citizens, um, participating in the twenty-twenty census in a program called Be Counted. Uh, also, this, um, on February fourth, uh, we had our first leadership luncheon here in town, and this was, um, a presentation by Pastor Rod Loy, who has written the book Help, I'm in Charge. And, uh, that was a well-attended luncheon with about fifty people there. And the next luncheon's going to be on Tuesday, February eighteenth, and it's gonna be at the Lone Oak First Assembly Church. And the speaker's gonna be Ms. Kendra Pruitt, who's the senior advisor to the Little Rock Mayor's Office. And so if you're interested in attending, um, you can go to the website, luncheonloneoke.com, and, uh, get your tickets before the fourteenth of this month. So, um, we have the downtown support committee, uh, has been making progress and trying to go forward to get us to be part of the Main Street Arkansas program. And they have, um, sent out letters to, uh, the Board of Directors that used to be part of the Main Street Lone Oak Program, and looking to see if they want to continue to be part of that, or, and also help to identify new members, with the goal of trying to, um, have this board start, uh, performing at, under the same nonprofit banner as the original organization. And so the goal is, uh, to have this Main Street Lone Oak program accepted by the state. And once that occurs, then, uh, the board will be exploring opportunities for getting, uh, funding for economic development in the town. Their next meeting is going to be tomorrow at, uh, February eleventh at noon at the museum. And they'll be looking for people to continue to help them with the Main Street Arkansas program. Uh, the beautification team, we met on January twenty-seventh, and we discussed our goals for twenty-twenty. And so we're gonna continue this year with the Yard of the Month Club, uh, excuse me, Yard of the Month program. And we're gonna start it in May and run it through October. And then we're going to expand that to have a, a December Yard of the Month, which will, you know, be looking at the, uh, holiday decor that people put out in their, uh, yards. We're also going to have what's called Business of the Month program. And this will be to award local business having the most attractive storefront, and that will also go through the same, uh, May through October, uh, period. Our next meeting's gonna be at five-thirty at the museum on the twenty-fourth, and we certainly welcome others to join us. On our infrastructure team, we have a new co-lead, it's Mr. Gibb Richardson. He's going to be joining, uh, Walz McCrery in leading this program. And Gibb is a Lone Oak resident that works with the Arkansas National Guard. And our other teams will be making announcements about other upcoming meetings, um, in the near future. Anna, thank you.
Ciao, Anna. All right, we'll get right into it. Mr. Bill Blankenship's first on the list, community development.
Good evening. I'm Bill Blankenship, Director of Community Development. I was jumping right in. I'll just let you know, now, if you look at these dates, if you look at this, I messed up all the dates. I'm looking into the future. But, uh, I attended the plumbing and HVAC inspector training classes, and I'm currently licensed in both. Um, I was also accepted by the Arkansas Board of Electric, Electrical Examiners to become an electrical inspector, and will be tuned, uh, I'll be attending those classes as soon as they come up with the schedule. They haven't put the schedule out yet. Um, I attended the city council meeting on January the sixth, um, condemnation meeting on January the sixteenth, planning and zoning meeting on January the twentieth, and the budget meeting on January the twenty-seventh. Um, at the condemnation meeting, we asked for approval to deem both properties and structures unsafe. For the ones that did show up, thought that was a pretty good idea. I have, uh, met with our attorney since then on what we've come up with, and if you'd like, I've got copies up here if you wanna see the letter. I don't know if you wanna see them or not. But we did come up with a letter that'll go out to them, uh, deeming the property as unsafe. And all that does is, uh, to deem it unsafe, we don't need to go before the city council. Um, we can go ahead and deem it unsafe. What that does is it gives them thirty days to respond back to city hall and a lot, and notify us of their intentions and what they plan to do with the property. Um, it also gives them the opportunity to pull a permit. If they do pull a permit, that gives them six months to get started and get ready to go to work. So that keeps us from having to just completely, you know, go straight into condemnation. Um, I think it's a great opportunity for the, for the property owner. You know, they don't come to us accusing us of just condemning their properties. I mean, we are truly notifying them on the end product of what I've come up, or what we have come up with, I'm sorry. Um, and this notice will be placed on their, on the structure to be deemed unsafe and be future condemned if they choose not to do anything about it. Um, this will be posted onto their dwelling. Um, they'll be able to reach in here, my card is there. They can take that card out. The letter, of course, will be sent out. It'll be sent out snail mail, and it'll also be sent written mail. So they're getting plenty of opportunities to get in touch with this one. Um, when they do get this card and they do contact city hall, I'll have a packet for them that explains to them the city's rights, what the city plans to do, explains to them their rights and their right to come up to appeal to y'all. Um, it's gonna be a complete packet. Um, and plus, uh, it gives us opportunity to sit down and discuss. Um, so I'm, I'm just gonna go with that, leave that alone. Right now, current, uh, there are several of us here within the city. We're currently working on the fireworks program, uh, which is gonna help us with inspection processes and stuff like that, to be able to do it online. Um, I think I explained that at the last one. And I'm currently working to become a floodplain manager with the city. Currently have one. We have a floodplain, and the only thing really required by the state, I think, is to be a flood, to have a floodplain administrator. I think it'd be a benefit to have a floodplain manag- manager in place. Because of the way, you know, because we don't have one, I'm currently gonna pay for that training. And if I pass it, I'm gonna be reimbursed. If I don't, you're not out anything. Um, it is a really tough course. But I don't, I really don't have any, don't think that I'll pay.
And we're not gonna set Bill up for failure. He's gonna be working with Leanne Poole at Central Arkansas Planning and Development District. She's currently, I think, the nearest floodplain manager, and she's been, uh, certified for quite a long time.
Would you, uh, refresh my memory, and I know several on that condemnation meeting, we didn't, didn't attend, or, um, some of us didn't make it. But this, as far as deeming something unsafe, this isn't something we just came up with, only kinda the idea of reinstating it, but that was in the, in the laws and the books already.
Yes, it's already, um-
It's just something we haven't been doing necessarily.
According to four thirty-one, uh, states in, as deeming a property as a nuisance or as unsafe. Um, as a nuisance, believe it or not, because there's a big difference there. As a nuisance, I do believe it has to become before city council, but to deem it unsafe, it does not. It just has to be somebody appointed by the mayor. Has come to me or to Jim. If one of us can do it, as city inspector. And like I say, this just affords, it gives us time to work on it. It gives us time to talk to the, to the property owner. Um, it gives them an opportunity, you know, instead of just going in feet first and slamming them to the wall. It's, it's just another process, you know, and trying to make it look, you know, trying to be nice about it.
Thank you, Bill. Appreciate it, man.
Thank you.
All right, next up's Mr. Uh, Chief Whittenburg from the fire department.
Good evening.
Hey, Chief. Good evening.
Uh, the first thing you should see before you is our total for the month. We get, uh, twenty-one EMS calls, uh, fifteen fire-related calls, patrol thirty-six. We're out seventeen hours, eleven minutes, and the average attendance was five-point-five-three. Any questions over that? All right, the next thing you should have before you is, I was unable to attend last month's meeting, but y'all went over this. There was a discussion on what we should go with, and I'm kinda like Regina said, you know, the one-year subscription, I know it costs a little bit more, but if something bigger and better comes out, we're locked into up to five years of, you know, with this one program. Uh, I don't know what's gonna become of it, but our software programs is a, a cheaper software program, and, uh, it's a little company, and the, the owner actually got killed in a car accident, so I'm not sure where that'll go. So I don't want the same thing to happen with this, but that might happen with that, so.
Chief, can you just explain real quickly what I A R actually is?
Yeah, I am responding. It's a, uh, cellphone-based app that actually dispatches us. So when we get a call, our cellphone goes off, kinda like our pagers do, except the pagers only work within twenty miles of town where your cellphone works, wherever you are.
Well, I make a motion that we, uh, pay the eight-hundred dollars for the one-year subscription to I A R.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion on it? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Next thing I got is a standby generator for the fire department. It's purchased through the Sourcewell, so it's, uh, the only bit we got. It's on the third page. You'll see the price. It's a ten-week lease. I'm on, I'm on start tomorrow getting kids on installing. It's just for the generator itself. It's, uh, twenty thousand seven hundred and five dollars.
Make a motion that we, uh, purchase the generator for twenty, roughly twenty-one thousand dollars. Twenty thousand seven hundred and five dollars.
Motion's made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion on the purchase? Motion's made, seconded, any discussion on the purchase? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
All right, the next thing I have is Warren Robinson, it's tires and car, it's two car trucks.
It's tires.
Tires, yes, sir. One of them actually got punctured on interstate right after I pulled this boat, the day after, so I went ahead and put two front tires on one of them, so one folks for the rest of them, and then one folks for the other truck that needs all new tires. It is, the total is right there, six thousand one hundred thirty, thirty-seven.
We need good tires on there, make a motion, we buy them.
Motion's made, and seconded, any discussion on the purchase of the fire truck tires?
Yeah, Chief, was there, was there an opportunity to buy these tires locally?
This is on the state contract, so they're cheaper. But yes, there are. It wouldn't have saved us any money, though.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Anything else? Appreciate it. All right, Mr. Roy Don Lewis with Parks and Recs Department. Welcome back.
I don't have a lot today, a couple things, the concession stand out there at the ballpark, they have it in dry now, that all blocked up, real solid and stuff, metal, they can do it, have it in dry, got plywood down and got the rubber on top of it. You haven't seen it, the mayor had to take a couple pictures, put it on Facebook, it was really nice. The other thing I've got is, the concession stand y'all voted, the board was concession stand y'all voted to let us buy last week, the week before last?
Oh, the trailer.
The trailer? We did not buy it, the guy did not have a, when he got up there to get it, he didn't have the title. He had everything else, he didn't have the title, so we came back. So we're still looking for something, something like that, so if you happen to see anything, give me a call, we'll go with it. Mayor, did you want me to bring up about the glass up front, or you want to do that?
No, you can't. Yeah, we talked about this, thought you were going to bring it.
Been working on, put that door right here front in the mayor's office here. We're going to put glass down the bar on both sides, and sliding windows on both sides of the door when you come in. It stands across the bar. We called four different places, we have one give us a bid so far, the other one's been a month, American attests to that, they came out and looked and everything, and the other one just never did show up. I did put out a phone call today to another place over here, Staley's in Cabin, to give us a bid. We have received one bid, and it come up to five thousand six hundred and eighty dollars. Now that's putting sliding windows on both, on each side where Bill was going to be sitting, or Janey's sitting. Glass from wall, all the way back around to the door, and back over to the other wall. And it's going to be protected, that glass is going to be like a windshield, you know, it won't shatter if something hits it. What I would like to have permission to spend that, up to that amount, and try to get at least one more quote, we've been trying to get more quotes.
To be clear, that's not like a security glass, it's tempered, but it would be a glass pane, like they put in a bank, that would have a, like a protective film on it that would prevent shattering if somebody brought a brick.
That's not coming out of my budget, it's coming out of the mayor's office. But we're trying to.
From our glass company or a contractor?
This is a glass company. This, Bizzwinger, is that? Bizzwinger's going to give us this one, still waiting on Staley's, we called the glass doctor and then one other one.
He called a guy over in England?
Yeah, Tracy's Glass in England, yeah.
Yeah, he, I mean, thus far, everything I've ever had him bid has been.
I'll get that information, just if you don't mind.
Do you have his number?
I do, I have his information.
You'll leave it with Regina, and tomorrow I'll get in touch with them and then try to get a quote from them. But I just would like to have the, if we don't, if it's not no cheaper, with these other ones, at least we can have, go ahead and get started, I'll see if we get the bids on these others, on these other two.
I, I don't mind making a, recommending that, but, but I would like to see at least two other bids. I'd like for you to get two other bids, I mean, we can go up to the fifty-five-hundred, but let's get, make sure we got two other.
Actually, fifty-six-eighty.
Okay, fifty-six-eighty.
But, yeah, we're, we're going to try to get three bids, at least three bids. We, like I said, we done made, we called four different class.
Oh, I understand it's hard to get people out, but Tracy, he, they would, they'll, they'll come and give you.
Staley's is supposed to give us a quote, like, come out tomorrow and then give us a quote, and so I'll, I'll call this other one.
Make a motion that we spend up to fifty-six-eighty to get the protective glass around the office.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, to spend up to the current estimate of five thousand six hundred and eighty dollars, with two more estimates that are going to be coming in, that gives you the flexibility to get those estimates and then go ahead and make the purchase. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank y'all.
Absolutely, thanks. All right, Mr. Jim Kelly with Public Works. Sure did, yeah.
We did find several significant water leaks last week that were adversely affecting our water loss, if I corrected, I said four of them. They were significant leaks. And so next month, I just hope the water loss can drop drastically. I'm already saying it's a little bit of a water drip point. See. Soon as we can get past most of this weather, I got a lengthy list of street patches that need to be done, potholes that we need to take care of. Right now, if we go to have you on patching, they just get blown out from the vehicle traffic. But as soon as we get decent weather, we're going to start hitting those hard. Drainage issues, tons of drainage issues, we're now identifying pinch points, restrictions, logging those, coming up with plans to fix those issues. We got three projects, we're going to start probably this week, and then we're just going to keep rolling through them and hit those hard too as well. I got a new level coming, so we can start shooting rate on all these ditches and properties to see, to get maximum flow from our ditches. So that should be beneficial, we've been doing it kind of a, or old-fashioned way, I think, before, and I'd like to do it a little bit different. The sidewalk project is about fifty percent complete, with Lincoln and College done. We have noted some corrections that need to be made on those sidewalks, which is going to be at the contractor's responsibility to make those corrections, but we are noting any issues that, that we've seen. One item that requires action tonight is a two thousand, two thousand twenty Dodge Ram, it's just a regular cab, short wheelbase pickup truck. It's a contract, it's a little water vehicle. It's priced at twenty-two thousand four hundred fifty-four dollars.
Budgeted it, Adam?
It is. I also budgeted a bid for it, so next council meeting, I'll have the price for the service bid on that vehicle.
Motion that we buy a new water truck for twenty-two, four fifty-four.
Motion's made and seconded, is there any discussion on the purchase? All in favor, say aye. All opposed?
Also on your table, I included a map of the proposed phase two water.
Jim, real quick, let me clear that up. There's a purchase for a work truck and a utility bed for the work truck.
Just the truck right now?
Okay, I didn't hear you say that you wanted to defer. You wanted to defer the utility truck, or the utility bed for the work truck? Okay.
Set at two twenty-two. And that was the truck.
Okay, so.
That didn't include the bed.
You got what you need?
Back it. All right, included a map of blue would be phase one, which is under construction, green would be phase two, and just to give you an idea of the areas that are going to be affected.
What percent is complete phase one, just running? What percent is complete phase one?
I'd say we're maybe near fifty percent. Even some of the areas where the new line is laid, they have to be revisited for service tabs, so pressurizing lines is a considerable job.
True.
So is this something you're going to post, like on the city website, where the public will know? I think that would be really nice to inform the public.
There's no issues, I'm planning on hitting this out next week, a few weeks after, and in a bit, thirty days, and we'll bring it to council.
The sidewalks are looking very nice, very nice, I've heard a lot of compliments on those.
My kid's tested them on Saturday, so.
Have you? I've been looking at them too hard, so I keep finding flaws and things. But we'll get anything I find straightened out, for sure. Other than that, that's, that's pretty much it. If there's anything that you see on the report and do not see, that you'd like added or any additional information, just reach out and let me know, because I'm not sure what y'all are looking for exactly, but I'm not providing any information to you if you want.
Thanks, Jim, for that. All right, I'm going to back up real quick, Mr. Mike Brown, I skipped you earlier, I'm sorry. I don't know if you realize it or not, but you're on deck.
It's okay, Jim, it's okay, man.
We wouldn't forget you.
January at the community center, that's our, that's our Christmas, where everybody wants to make resolutions and get to the end. We had a forty-three point one percent increase. Now it's, I got them out there, so it's my job to retain them, so we're, we're trying everything we can do to retain them. We, I think we're, we're trying to get some dance class going on, we're trying to get karate class back, so we're just trying to do a lot of things to keep members engaged. Not asking for anything tonight, but the main thing I wanted to talk about, I'm trying to do a program, my wife has been cleaning the house, and, you know, we're, we're a big sports fan, and she got to throwing gloves and balls, and I'm like, no, you can't do this. But I got to thinking about it, how I kept my kids out of trouble, you just get, give them a ball, give them a glove, and you don't see kids just outside playing anymore. So I propose this program is a sports, sports exchange, we're going to have on the twenty-ninth of February, and where the whole community, if you want to donate gloves, balls, if you want the tennis court to be used, donate old tennis rackets, cleats, ping pong paddles, ping pong tables, golf clubs, helmets, pads, just anything that we could give to these kids, and I think you'll see Roy Dunn's participation go up in baseball, and I know you'll see soccer participation going up, our basketball participation, so I'm asking that everybody get behind this and look in your closets, look at, you know, look upstairs and, and bring out any old sports equipment that you've got, we'll take it, and I've got a staff, you know, if it needs some lacing, I'll buy the lacing and re-lace. We just want to get the kids, get something to the kids, a lot, believe it or not, you may have some kid out there that wants to play baseball but can't because they don't have a glove. So if we do this, I think we'll see our participation in sports go up. Pretty much all I have.
Mike, can you give me the dates again on that?
February the twenty-ninth.
At the community center.
You want fishing stuff, too?
Fishing, something that, you know, to, 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 to get the youth, get them off those phones and out of the house. And I also thought she's going through closets, and I think my daughters have been in all kind of pageants, and I know, I know I've got one dress that I paid seven hundred fifty dollars for, it's sitting in my closet, so.
Put that thing on, Mike, wear it around town.
It's, it's a little too small, but, you know, I, and if, I'm, I'm planning on having something like that for community get together, bring old prom dresses, suits or whatever to the kids that, you know, I've got some nice ones, nice dresses, so.
Thank you very much, appreciate you, Mike. All right, Chief Edwards? Police Department?
Good evening.
Good evening.
All I have today is the report from January twenty-twenty, of course, the numbers in front of you. Complaint dispatch calls were two hundred and thirty-seven, I've noted that that was a hundred and forty-five less than December. Nine-one-one calls were two hundred and fifteen, forty-two less than December. Of course, there's some more numbers there, but I wanted to note that there was twenty-seven felony arrests, fourteen more than December. I'm accrediting that to my patrolman, making narcotics arrests while on traffic stops. There's not been any new other violent felonies in, in that, but most of them were felony drugs, drug arrests. My effort between, or I'm sorry, the combined amount between the build immigration and probation parole is ten thousand nine hundred and eighty. Tickets written, of course, if you would look on to the second page in the different wards broke, broken up, there are sixteen citations, there's eight more in then December. Total reports were a hundred and three for the month, fourteen more than December. Any questions? Chief, I did want to ask if, on the next report, if you would like to see the plus or minus on those complaints on the actual form, instead of me just bringing it to you verbally?
Hey, man, I want to give the police department, you know, you get so much bad news sometimes and so many complaints, well, I had a niece that had warrants on her, and she got pulled over, and she went to jail, and she gave the Lono Police Department the utmost compliment, she says, she said, treated me so nice, so I think that's a form of leadership showing, and I hope we continue on.
Thank you, sir.
Good job, thanks to you. All right. Legend of Finance, Mr. Philip Powell, Sir of the Forge, George.
Two things, first of all, you'll recall, we talked about bidding out the, the construction loan for the concession stand that Roy Don mentioned earlier. We did bid that out, we got four responses for the four hundred fifty thousand dollars sixty-month loan. The two, the low bid was from RBS Bank, three point one-one. The second lowest bid was for State Bank at three point one-four-nine, about four basis points higher. The difference being, in reality, the First State Bank bid is better, there's very little cost associated with that loan. The RBS Bank has an origination fee and a freight fee, title insurance, because they actually would take a lien on the building. You search that, the minimum cost of that would be a couple thousand dollars, and we would never recoup a couple thousand dollars over the life of that loan for, the whole four hundred fifty thousand dollars stayed out for the whole period, we're talking about a hundred seventy-five dollars a year, so that won't happen, we anticipate paying that off in less than five years. So my recommendation is to accept the bid from First State Bank for the four hundred fifty thousand. So my recommendation is to accept the bid from first state bank for the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars at three point one-four-nine percent.
I'll entertain a motion.
Sir, I'll make the motion.
Motion's made. Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion on it? All in favor, say aye. All opposed?
I didn't confer with Mike. The other thing we have, you'll see in your packet, a copy of the two thousand eighteen audit of the city done by the legislative joint auditing committee with the state. Takes them a while to do this, so we're just, we're just now getting two thousand eighteen's. They'll soon start on the two thousand nineteen. This week, they'll start on the two thousand nineteen audit and they'll be here for quite some time. They always are. You can read through this and there's a lot of, a lot, a lot here. Basically, it's an excellent audit. No discrepancies, no major deviations. We always get a comment about our accounting system and the, the state is working on a new accounting system. They're already asking us to comply to it, but they haven't even put the rules out yet. So they write it up like it's already out and that's all that's in this report. It's, it's excellent. Give credit to our administrative staff. They do a nice good job.
Do you need a motion to approve that report?
Make a motion that we approve the financial.
Two thousand eighteen audit?
Two thousand eighteen audit.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion on the acceptance? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? That motion carries? All right, we're gonna move right on. We're almost at an hour right now, so I'm gonna be as quick as I can. I've got about three points of new business. There is no old business. All right, and the first, we got a request to release an RP for website design services. Unless there's any objection from the city council, I've kind of undershot this request. We've got money bid or money budgeted into this year's budget, okay? To redesign the website, but this is really more of a branding campaign, not just, a website is just one piece of that. I had a very good conversation with Will Staley of Thrive this afternoon. And what I'd like to do is actually bring more information to the council in March as to where I want to go with this. That way I can have a plan, can actually have numbers to put behind it and what this is gonna look like, okay? You're looking at about five or six thousand dollars to renovate that website. But this is inclusive of a billboard campaign, social media advertisements, mailers. It's, it's a whole branding and marketing plan to kind of pick up initially where the Kickstarter program started and see it through fruition, okay? So you guys can expect those numbers in March. Unless there's any objections, we'll move past that point. All right, thank you. All right, the second point, we've already got permission from the council to release an RFQ for entering into a partnership with energy service contractor. Since that point, I have had many conversations with Gene Eagle, Gib Richardson, Walls McCrory, Philip even, has been in these conversations. And we've spoken with the Arkansas Energy Office and they are kind of an oversight committee to all these energy service performance contracts and solar projects that are going in across the state. All right, they actually have a, they provide a consultation service, all right? It's point three percent of the, of the project phase. And you guys printed this out for you guys, put in your packets, three tenths of a percent. And talking to Chet Howland at the Arkansas Energy Office, we would be looking at approximately ten to eleven point five thousand dollars on about a million three project to get top shelf blue ribbon consultation who can walk us through the investment grade audit, consider the table, help us negotiate financing fees, interest rates, and, and give us these comps all across the state so that we actually go in with an advisor who is seeing the best and the worst of these projects. And so I'm gonna ask the city council tonight to enter into a partnership with the Arkansas Energy Office and accept their cost, which will be due only if we execute a contract past the investment grade audit.
So move.
Thank you. Motion's made. Do I have a second? Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion on it?
Do we have an estimate of what that's gonna cost? Did you say?
Point three percent of whatever the product is.
The services from the Energy Office, about ten thousand dollars. That's from Chegg's estimate, looking at the size and scope of what Lono could be putting up.
Okay, so percentage wise, that would be the three percent?
Point three.
Yeah, point three, three tenths of a percent. So about ten thousand dollars and then you'd be looking at hopefully fifty to maybe a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of negotiation he might be able to save us in terms of sitting down at the table and saying, that's not, that doesn't look right. This other town didn't get that or can kind of hold her hand through the negotiation phase, help us get the best rate.
This is a state agency providing the services?
State agency, yeah, Arkansas Energy Office. Any other questions? If not, we'll take it to a vote then. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Thank you. All right. We've already passed the resolution two dash one dash twenty twenty. Next on the list, you'll see telecommunications and right-of-way management contract with local government services. If you guys remember, Greg Fender owns a company in Delanca, Georgia called Local Government Services and he's the one who helped us negotiate the contract with AT&amp;T. This is what he does on day-in, day-out basis. He also provides consultation services for cities throughout Georgia and Arkansas, I believe portions of Mississippi, to make sure that municipalities are receiving all of the franchise taxes that they are charging utility companies, all right? And these range anywhere from half a million dollars down to a few hundred dollars, all right? It's recommended that cities audit their franchise revenue every three years or so. Regina could give you testament as to how much we've probably been losing. We can't even put our thumb on it, but we haven't had an audit maybe ever. Okay, so he charges four thousand dollars if we want to say, hey, Greg, would you please audit our cable company franchise? You know, our media three, media three's been here. We don't think that they've been paying their fair share, what they're supposed to be paying. Would you please audit it's four thousand dollars per audit? Or we can enter to an annual subscription for five thousand dollars total. At any point in time of the year, we can call them and say, hey, this is what we need. Would you please check on it, make sure that we're getting the full extent of what we're owed by the law? And I was printing off for you guys a list to look at different cities. Now I called Cabot. Cabot's in their second year. They went with Greg last year on this. I called and talked to the lawyer there. He said Greg more than paid for his services last year. But I wanted you guys just to have a range and see that they did an audit for Columbia County and from Comcast alone, they saved Columbia County six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Go to the bottom of the list. They saved Orchard Hill. I couldn't tell you where that's at, thirty-three dollars. But in between, there's like two hundred different cities listed here, all right? So with that, I'll entertain a motion to put resolution two dash two dash twenty twenty on the floor.
May I make a motion to put resolution two dash two dash twenty twenty on the floor?
Motion's made? Motion's made and seconded.
Resolution two dash two dash twenty twenty, a resolution of the city of Lono through the alderman to authorize the mayor of said city to execute a telecommunications, can't talk today, telecommunications right-of-way management service agreement. Whereas the city desires to regulate the provision of telecommunications services and the use of the right-of-way by companies providing services to the citizens of the city. Whereas Local Government Services LLC has available a telecommunications right-of-way management service to assist the city in such regulation. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor of the city of Lono is hereby authorized to execute a telecommunications right-of-way management service agreement on behalf of the city.
So in their contract, we got, I'm sure, is that like a renewable contract once a year or how is that written?
It is. It is.
Is that automatically renewed or?
I'll check, I'll verify for you, but the way I understand it, you, is that what it says in the contract?
Section eight, part C says it's automatically renewed for a successive one-year calendar terms unless terminated by getting thirty days written notice in advance, in advance of such termination.
Well, forgive me for not knowing that, so it's automatic?
Okay, I missed it with my reading as well. I guess that would be my only pause.
I mean, it's just, you just need to calendar out first of January twenty twenty-one to start thinking about whether we want it renewed and make sure we get those before March.
What's the, what's the escape clause in it as far as?
Thirty days advance notice. So, you know, if we start thinking about it in January, then.
I mean, I think it's great and I mean, he, he, he made up for that, for what he did with us with the AT&amp;T, so.
He's sharp.
Yeah, he's sharp. That's a good, that's a cool, that's a cool model.
Okay. Is there any further discussion before we take it to a vote? Any other questions? All right, all in favor to accept resolution two dash two dash twenty twenty, say aye. All opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you. All right, we got one more resolution. And this is, Ginger, you can probably elaborate more, but we need a resolution that allows the mayor and the city clerk to sign off on the closing documents of Dr. Holmes's office.
This just kind of finishes out the closing on it. We did a title search and everything turned out okay on it. It's just the title company requires a, a resolution saying who actually gets to sign on behalf of the city and receive it, which seems like it'd be obviously the mayor and the clerk, but you actually have to have a resolution to do that each time. So that's what this is. It's just finishing up what we've pretty much already done with our prior motions to accept his offer.
I'll take a motion to put resolution two dash three dash twenty twenty on the floor. Motion's made and seconded.
Resolution number two dash three dash twenty twenty, a resolution by the city of Lono authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute closing documents to sell property commonly referred to as Dr. Holmes's office. Whereas after a lengthy process of evaluation, marketing and other attempts to sell the property, the city council solicited bids to sell the property commonly referred to as Dr. Holmes's office and more particularly described as follows. Lots one and two, block seven, Hickson Reynolds survey to the town of Lono, Lono County, Arkansas. Whereas at the regular city council meeting on December ninth, two thousand nineteen, the, the council voted to accept the bid made by Lee and Kimberly Holmes for the sum of ten thousand and no one hundred dollars. Whereas the city council believes this is a fair price for the property, given its current condition and rehabilitation needs. Whereas the city council hereby authorizes the mayor and clerk to execute a deed and any other closing documents on behalf of the city of Lono and to pay any reasonable closing costs assessed to the city from the proceeds of the sale. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council for the city of Lono, Arkansas, does hereby authorize the mayor and clerk to execute a deed and any other closing documents on behalf of the city of Lono to sell a property for the sum of ten thousand and no one hundred dollars.
Any discussion on it? And we'll take it to a vote. All in favor to accept, say aye. All opposed? And motion carries. All right, lastly, I'll take a motion to approve the bills. Motion's made and seconded. Any questions or concerns? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? All right, I got two announcements for the public. There is a state of the city that's been recently put out on social media, the city's social media website and the YouTube channel. So please, put a lot of work into that. Holden Lane actually did a lot of work this year and last year to help us put that video together. And so I'm very proud of it. So please check it out, share it, like it and get it out there so folks can know what's going on in the city. And also, you guys remember, we took the motion to approve the city council bench. It's not gonna be here next month, probably gonna be April before we have an opportunity to actually use it. So just two more months and poor Regina and Bill Blankenship, myself, won't be moving these tables and microphones around every city council, so. All right, we're just past an hour, so what I'm gonna do, I know some folks showed up tonight to have a brief word with the city council, so I'm gonna open up the floor real briefly. Ms. Gina Wirdelick, I know you had a, you wanted to take an opportunity to say something?
Yes. Thanks to the city council for allowing me the opportunity to speak and I grew up here. I'm so excited for all the things that are happening. Jim, my husband, AKA Crumpy, is handing out the information I've wanted everybody to see. And my dad, Darryl Cox, is also here to support our endeavor, part of wanting to bring back downtown Lono. And when you see on the piece of paper, the business card is Tater Tot Enterprises LLC. And for those of you that knew or did not know my mom, she never ate junk food. It was only country food. She always had tater tots, so that's why I wanted to thank the company, Tater Tot Enterprises. And we purchased the building downtown between Glover Insurance and Boya Antiques. And we're going to open a restaurant and we want to call it the Grumpy Rabbit. And we want it to be a family restaurant. The vision that I have is having an aquarium in the restaurant with local fish and have coloring sheets for the kids to be able to mainly get educated on the fish that we have around town. And one reason is because last summer I took six kids with me to vacation Bible school and going six miles down the country road, none of them knew the difference between rice, soybeans and corn. So by the time that we came back, they, they knew all about it, but. And we would like to offer discounts for military and first responders. And with the restaurant being downstairs, the upstairs would be hopefully an overflow and also use it for meetings for business people or school clubs or church organizations. And we hope to advertise via social media, website and also Arkansas DOT signs out on the interstate and maybe billboards. And we have Ron and his wife that are part of our team to help people following all the rules on doing renovations and coming up with great ideas. And I would just like to ask for y'all to consider granting a private club membership license. And also on the bottom of the sheet is a timeline that we hope to get on the agenda for the next city council meeting, March ninth. Thank you.
Thank you, Gina.
Gina, I want to thank y'all for taking that building off of our, out of our hands. I want to thank y'all for taking that building out of our hands.
Ms. Rita? I had a chance to speak with Ms. Rita this week and she said if she got an opportunity, she wanted to come and address the city council. Ms. Rita, is your last name Adams?
It's Adams.
Ms. Rita Adams. All right, thank you.
And I live at twelve fifteen Jester Street in the Privates Edition. I've lived there. My daughter is forty-one. I guess I've lived there thirty-eight years. And the whole time I've lived there, I've never had a water problem, never had any kind of rain to get in my house. But my house flooded. I got water in my house just recently. And I've had trouble with my commode. I cannot flush it. The day after you left and talked to me, I had the same problem again. All of the water is holding under my foundation. I've got a foundation, my whole foundation of my house is falling. And right now, the water, since you left and it rained, there's water all in the center, all back in the back again. And it, it rains very much more, I'm gonna have the same problem. And I, five years ago, I was talking to one of the guys that worked for the city and I told them about it and they said they were working on it. That was five years, that's five years done, went and come, okay? And not a thing has been done about it, not one thing. And I hate to have to leave the house that I have lived in all these years. It's, it's what happened is the houses that behind us, Privates Edition, the big one they built up, they put all the dirt up on us. All the water comes back on us. I can name every house over there that's got foundation. My sister's got a big cracked foundation. Every house is going. And the girl next to me, she living on concrete, pure concrete. Would you like to live on concrete? Would you like to get up in the middle of the night and, and, and wave water in your, where you want to go to your bathroom?
I have, but I don't want to do it again, so.
No, but that's what kind of conditions we're living in. And it's, and it's unhumane. And we're gonna have mold. There's mold sitting in them hoses and the guy right next to me, it got in his. The house down there, it got in it. It's washing all the foundations away from these houses. In the length of time that they built them houses, it has been. In the length of time that they built them houses, it has been nothing but a mess. We've tried, I mean, people's, talk to people, but it's all talk and no do. They wanna fix everything else around here and put restaurants in and, and do all kinds of other things, that's all nice, and schools and do things, but we're the people living here. And if we got to live in that kind of condition, we're not gonna live in it. We can't live in it. We, all I have done is lost value in my home, it is totally burnt. My back door won't even shut her lock halfway. And this other day, the main man come out, the, the, one of the workers, and I didn't know how bad it really had gotten. I walked back there with him, and guess what I did, I sunk down in mud like quicksand, he like the never got me out of the mud. That's why it's coming up under my commode and going in the floor, I'm living on concrete in my bathroom.
You know, I pass this around so everybody can see a picture, I live one block from her, and everybody can see.
No, it's, it's, it's a wonder.
I live across the street and it's.
Yeah, our foundation, she's got a foundation, it's on side her crack.
Flush the toilet when it rains.
Yeah, he came.
Water has washed away our soil, okay?
It's washed every bit of our soil away.
There's a couple of them, but I am right on the corner of Plantation and Fairview.
Yeah, it's hitting us all.
It got even worse when they laid all the new.
When they did the plumbing, my road isn't as bad as it was, but I have to clean out half the block because there's no neighbors there, and it builds up, so there's pine needles and stuff, and so I have to go down with the rake and stuff and drag it all out because I know their houses are lower, I'm on the corner, so it's not getting into my house, now my fan, foundation is cracked. I mean, it's, the walls even in the house, it's gotten, you know, horrible because, and we're fixing to have a bigger rain, so even though.
I, I, I take what I do.
It's scary when you.
I live in fear.
Has it been that way a long time?
My house has gone flood.
And it has steadily got worse.
It's been getting worse because the more rain we're having, as you can see, over the past five years. It's sad.
Well, ma'am, I can, I can identify with you, I live on Reynolds Street, and for the last, until this year, when I took dirt from the city and built up mine, my den used to have about twelve foot, well, about twelve inches of water in it.
And I'm gonna tell you what.
And I, and I understand how you feel about
Yeah.
You hate to hear the rain coming, because you know what's coming in your house.
I know what's coming on.
So I, I feel for you.
Well, this affects all of us over there, and
It's just not me, everybody.
We don't wanna hurt someone else's property or bringing in dirt and bumping ours up, and then all the water goes there to all them.
And then they're, then they're dirt, then I can't, they're dirt.
They put dirt on the right side of my property, so that lets the water go there at the beginning of being there, I've been there forty years almost.
My sister and I both have lived in that area, and you know what? It is a sad day, but you have to live like this.
I don't wanna have to hurt somebody else's property.
I don't either.
Like they did to me.
Right.
That was done a long time ago, thirty-nine, eighty, thirty-eight years.
Ms. Rita?
Yes, yes, sir.
I'm sorry. And I, I want you to know that, I, I promise you, everybody up here, if we could go out tonight and we could, there was a short-term fix, we would do it. There's not, but I do want you to know, and I want you ladies to understand too, it's, it's the one thing I think about every single day. There's a lot of things I think about, and it's a thousand-piece puzzle, and we each have one piece in our hand.
But this is the very serious stuff.
It is, it is the biggest issue that we face as a community, but it will take.
They should have never allowed, the city council did this, they should have never allowed them to build, let Privet have his way and build dirt up on us and build houses up on us, and then it all come back on us and no, no place for the water to go. No place for it to go, they didn't have a plan made out for, for the drainage.
No, it wasn't planned good a long, long time ago when they built that.
It was never planned, and I've lived here all my life, and I hate to, you know what I'm planning on doing? I got somebody that wants to buy my house, she don't know who I am, and I don't know who she is, but I'm selling mine. She flips them, I'm selling it, I'm getting out, because you know what, it's sad that I have to do that. But I have no choice, I have no choice but to lose value of my home.
Right. Thank you.
I've worked all my life.
Thank you for coming up here tonight, we spoke last week, I know it's not easy to get in front of a public.
It's hard, and it's not hard for me tonight, because you know what? Like I just told you, the day before I spoke to you, the next day I went to flush my commode, I had water everywhere, again. And I've got a bad back, I got a bad spine.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a dead husband, it's in the grave, it just passed away, I have nobody to help me, no one, my soul. It's horrible. And I live in fear, and I shouldn't have to, I'm having anxiety attacks for it, it's gotten so bad that I just pass out. So that's all I got to say, something needs to be done, it needs to be done fast because it is, it's horrible. I went to one, looked at one little lady's house that worked for Walmarts, I can't think of her name, her house looked like an earthquake had hit it. Her ceiling is cracked from there to there, her whole backside of her house is just crumbling, the foundation, all of the brick is torn away. I feel sorry for that little lady, what's gonna happen, the house is gonna fall in on you, and you're gonna die, you're gonna get killed.
Give, give.
Yeah, the city has come out and has done pumping. I believe they bought a new pump, because the last time I had water so bad in my property.
Yeah, when they pumped, they did help.
I could hear the pump from down at her house, which I think you have bought a new pump. Which drained the water eventually off, but if it's going on at nighttime and I'm starting walking back, my house gets this high it gets to my house, it could flood me, and there's no one, I mean, they don't come out at night.
Yeah, it's the one place it's getting there, the dirt, there's no dirt. And you got, got a big crack all the way down, sister.
They are coming through, and they're checking everybody's properties for flooding, as I said, the city truck.
Can't get in back of mine, because they'll go down in the, they'll go down like quicksand.
Well, ladies, I, I appreciate it.
What we need to understand is when we say the city council didn't, didn't do anything, some of us weren't even born with how it was built, so.
It wasn't this council, so, 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 so we got, we got to, like the mayor said.
We didn't come into the city council, we didn't wanna cause a problem, we, we, we're not troubled, my.
I'm sure, I'm positively sure, and I have my confidence in the mayor and, and the city forces and everything, I'm positively sure that we will do whatever, whatever we can do.
You know what I thought, I told him, what the best place to, this place is, like bulldozers and bulldozer, every house out there.
Ms. Rita?
Slap them down to the ground.
Thank you, really appreciate it, we're gonna wrap up that conversation, there's one more gentleman in the, in the back, sir, I'm gonna open it up to you real quick.
I just wanna say, and I'm quite sure that we all aware of it, but the situation that she's talking about.
Everybody's aware. Everybody's aware of that, I know that.
The situation she's talking about, and I know we're all aware, is not gonna get any better because of climate change. So whatever we're gonna do, whatever can be done, it's not gonna get any better.
Yeah, and it, and it's an issue that, that's not just, not just unique to y'all, even there's other areas of the town that has flooding issues as well.
Come, come tell me what to do, you know, what I need to do.
And it's sad, my neighbor is living on concrete, I mean. Ms. Fay has had it five times up to her knees.
Wow.
If it been me, I done been up there, I done been up there.
I've had that five years of a lot of rain, and lightning, oh man, lightning goes on.
We're almost at an hour and a half for the city council, everybody who came out tonight, I want to say have really.
Everybody in the city council, just take, just take their time and walk them out.
I appreciate you guys coming out tonight, is there anything from the council?
I love.
If, if you guys came tonight, could you please ensure that you sign the roster, make sure your name's on it? If there's not anything else from the public or from the council, then I'll take a motion to adjourn, so, motion's made and seconded, any objections?
I mean, I know it's always been bad on campus, and I used to.
Southeast corner, it's always been.
Yeah, but I had no idea.
Make sure you sign in. No, it, it just helps make people.
Okay, no, that, that's fine.
Who's been here and. Put it in a minute.
Alright, I just found out tonight, as I was going knocking, knocking some doors, that the little girl that is on the side of the street that I went to school with, she's been there as long as I've been there, you know what she's doing? She's leaving her house, she's moving out Saturday. She can't take her house and so destroy it, it's all my sister's.
You start down all these places.
She's already moving out of her house. Isn't it horrible? You know, it's gonna bad when people start, everybody starts filing foreclosure, and it gets in front of the judge, and it's all coming from Lone Oak, you're gonna wonder why. There really are, and it's gonna happen. Pe- people's gonna do it, they're gonna file, they don't care, you know, everybody does it every day. I, I'm not gonna file foreclosure, because I got some money, and I'm gonna get out. I am getting out, but I'm trying to help my people, I'm not trying to just run off and leave my neighbors, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not that kind of person, I'm trying to get help for them. Because it's, it's the best thing I can do, I already got a buyer.
Listen, there's rain coming tonight. Some half inch tonight.
A half inch was one of the hard things.
It's not, when we get, listen, when we get an inch or two in about fifteen hours, that's when we flood, okay?
You got to have the pump.
Listen to me, we've already discussed it, if water ends up beginning, we can only expect to see the most, with no more rain than we're forecasting, it should be a problem.
But it's still.
And I want you to know that we're looking at it, we're talking about it.
Still standing on that ground, it's, it's, it's got to, it's rained already, it's not sinking down, it's so, it's so saturated in the center and by the front when you walk through, it's full of water now.